Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for August the 20th, 2012. As a reminder, if you have a cellphone or any kind of electronic device, if you will please put those on vibrate or on silent, we would all appreciate that. At this time, we will begin our meeting, as we always do, with the presentation of colors, and we are happy to welcome Boy Scout Troop Number 38 from Popertent Presbyterian Church. Please rise.
Girl guard, advance. Prepare the best colors. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
We're also happy to welcome tonight Pastor Scott Davis from Pitts Baptist Church.
Good evening. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we come to you thanking you for the blessings of this land. We know that every good and perfect gift comes down from above. We recognize that you're the one who has provided for our every need. Your word says that you even make your sun to shine on the just and the unjust. Lord, without you, we're nothing, and we can do nothing of lasting eternal value. We thank you also for your blessings on this community. We thank you for our community leaders. We pray that you would instill within them a wisdom to do your will, give them courage and strength. We pray for their deliberations tonight, help them to make the right decisions. God, we would ask that you would bring your light to this gathering. We pray for our firemen and police, for our military, and all who strive to keep us safe. We pray that you would grant them success in their respective missions and bring them back safely to their loved ones and family. Father, forgive us of our shortcomings, which are many. We pray that a spirit of godliness would again return to our nation, where men seek you and your ways above all. May all who seek to follow you prosper in their leadership and service. And, Lord, we make this our prayer in the name that is above every name, the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, in whom we have redemption. Amen.
At this time, we would like to recognize our scout troop members that were so kind to come tonight. If you will please come forward to the microphone, you may have to adjust it, and tell us your name and which school you go to, and what grade you're in, and who your parents are, just a little bit about yourself. And come on up, it's okay. You can all come up together and just kind of do one by one. Let us know who you are. And to your left, to my right, Commissioner Burridge has a pen that he would like to present to you.
My name is Jacob Smith. I go to Harris Road Elementary School.
I'm Ian Fulon, and I go to Cox Mill High School, and I'm in ninth grade, or 10th grade now. And my parents are John Kelly Fulon and Laurie Fulon.
My name is Austin Crum. I'm going to go to Hickory Ridge Middle, and my parents are Jelena and Brian Crum.
Thank you very much. We always appreciate it when we have a scout troop that can join us. Okay, the first item commissioners that we have, let me also mention, we had a request, and it was a very good request, for us to, for me to let you know when our meetings are broadcast. So if you are at home right now, you realize that this is broadcast live, our regular meeting is broadcast live, our work session meeting is delayed when it's broadcast. So let's see, the work sessions begin airing after the first Monday of the month and are broadcast for two weeks up until the regular meeting. Then the regular meeting begins airing live the third Monday of each month and is broadcast up until the next agenda work session. And the times are Saturday and Sunday, 1:00, Sunday, Tuesday, 6:30, Thursday and Friday, 6:30. I know a lot of people come up and comment to me about the fact that they watch our meetings on TV. We appreciate all of you that are here with us in person tonight. It's nice to have people here, and it's also nice to know that people that can't come to our regular meeting are able to watch it on Channel 22, if you have cable. Okay, the first agenda item we have is approval or correction of the minutes, commissioners. Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes?
Please approve the minutes as they're presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have approval of the agenda, and if you will notice, there is some supplemental information also included in your, in your board packet. So at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'd like to begin our meetings with recognitions and presentations, and tonight, we are happy to recognize Charles Phillips. So if Mr. Phillips can come forward, and I've asked Commissioner White, who is a member of the Health Alliance's Board of Directors also, to present this certificate to Mr. Phillips. And if there are anybody else from the Health Alliance here, if you would stand up, please, so that we will know that you are here in attendance.
It's James Mack, our new board member, who has chosen as vice chair.
Congratulations. We're glad to have you.
Charles, in outstanding dedication and service to Cabarrus County and all the citizens here, we are deeply appreciative, appreciative of the services that you provided to the Health Alliance, now the public health authority of Cabarrus County from 1995 until 2012. Sometimes you find people, and good people, and you want to stick with them. Unfortunately, you told us, you want to slow down and do some other things, which is great. However, we will certainly miss you on the Cabarrus Health Alliance Board. We will certainly miss your leadership in the health community in regards to the public health. But I know it's near and dear to your heart, and for that, we want to thank you for all your years of dedicated service, and if you'd like to take a few minutes to talk.
I most assuredly would. Thank you so much for this award, and thank you for the opportunity to share just a couple of thoughts. Cabarrus County is a very special place. I came here 22 years ago, and it just looked like a nice place to live, but having been involved in the community, I've come to realize what a special place Cabarrus County is. The spirit of cooperation among agencies and people groups, it is just amazing. When Pillotex went under, within 24 hours, we had mobilized a total organization to meet the needs. The people from the state came in a week later and said, "We're here to help." And we said, "Hey, just send money." We have had people come from all over this nation, I believe from other nations, to see how we did that. And one of the simple answers is, this is a great place where people work together. And that made my job on the Health Alliance Board very easy, because all you had to do was ask, and people were delighted to work together to meet the community needs. And it has been my great privilege and pleasure to be a part of the fabric of this community and to work on the Health Alliance Board with the county commissioners. And I just thank you for this opportunity to express my appreciation and delight at having had this opportunity to serve. And I see you have, on one of the agenda items, opportunities on other boards, and I'm looking. So I may be back. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, I'm sure we can sign you up before the evening's out, so. Next, we have Ben Rose is going to come up and talk about Child Support Awareness Month.
Thank you, and good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I come to ask your support for the proclamation that you should find in your agenda pack, recognizing September is Child Support Awareness Month. We are in excellent partnership here with our legal team, with the clerk of courts, with our local court and judges, and the sheriff's department. And this past fiscal year, we were able to collect well over $9 million in child support for the children of Cabarrus County. As you know, this helps support kids that do not have a parent in the home, and it helps provide health insurance and meet their basic needs, which is a great program. And it's our goal to try to use this program to keep kids off our poverty programs and keep them out of the poverty, and that's one of the biggest accomplishments that we have in child support. Another thing that we're very proud of this past year is our child support division was a top 25 performing division in the state. And that's an excellent achievement. We exceeded four out of our five incentive measures, and we only missed the fifth one by a little bit. And in this economy and these issues that we're facing with collecting, as you can imagine, trying to collect money is tough in a difficult economy, we are still exceeding most of our goals there, and we're very pleased with that. So I give kudos to my staff and the work that they do day in and day out. So with that, we hope that you will support this proclamation, and we'll proclaim September Child Support Awareness Month.
Okay, and commissioners, on page 47 of your agenda, we have the proclamation for Child Support Awareness Month. At this time, I would accept a motion to adopt the proclamation.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have another exciting event coming up. Dana Year is here to talk about 4-1-1, Four Districts, One Book, One Community.
As you all know, every year, or year and a half, the public library has a community read where we select one book and do a whole lot of programs around it. This year, the book that we've selected is The Hunger Games by Suzanne Collins, and we've done something a little different this year. We are doing our program, not only with the library, but the Parks Department, the community colleges, and some other organizations, not only in Cabarrus County, but Rowan, Stanley, and Union Counties. So that's where the four districts comes from, one for each county. And so what we've, our programs actually start tomorrow, and we have 60 programs planned, five contests, and a final event at the arena, and we're very excited about it. And what you have before you is a proclamation to make August, September, and October as 4-1-1 Community Reads Months.
Okay, on your, in your agenda packet on page 50, we have the proclamation. The movie came out yesterday, Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday. We got our copy yesterday. And last night, I, my daughter and future son-in-law were watching it. It's a, it's a great book. A lot of local people were in the movie. There is a shot, if you haven't seen the movie, there's a shot where, towards the beginning, this young lady's face pretty much covers the entire screen. That is Dr. Shepherd, superintendent of Cabarrus County Schools' oldest daughter. And when I saw it, I went, "Ha, ha, ha," and then she was gone, and my husband looked at me like I was crazy. So it's a, it's exciting to have that go on in Cabarrus County. They filmed in Cabarrus County, and like I said, it's a great book to read. I would encourage all of you to participate in the events that are coming up. So commissioners, we have a proclamation for 4-1-1, Four Districts, One Book, One Community. Do I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Think you're still up for the next one?
I have brochures I'm going to pass around to you guys.
Okay, great. And Susan Webster is going to come up and join you. Next item we have is International Literacy Day proclamation, and we're happy to welcome Susan, who is the literacy coordinator.
Thank you. On September 8th, 2012, here and all over the world, actually, International Literacy Day will be celebrated. On this day, each community chooses a different way to say thanks to whoever first showed them, taught them how to read. As you know, here in our county, we have close to 20,000 adults who still are struggling to read and write or express themselves in English. So we thought that the proclamation would help get the word out, that we still today have to make sure that every person has the opportunity to read and write and express themselves in English. So I ask today, if you'll look in your packet at the proclamation, I think it's on page 51, and consider claiming that we will push forward to eliminate illiteracy in Cabarrus County in 2012.
Okay, you have a proclamation honoring International Literacy Day, which is September the 8th, 2012. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I think we all will agree that the one thing that kind of transcends everything that we do is the ability to be able to read and to understand, and our libraries do an excellent job, and the literacy council has done a great job working on them, on literacy. Next up, we have Dennis Testerman's here. Where is Dennis? There you are. And Louis Suthar is here, and Jonathan Johnson is here, and it's Debbie Boss here. There you are, yep. Y'all will all come up, everybody that's, this is with the Soil and Water District. And Dennis, I'm going to let you explain everything, and we welcome all of your, your board members with us that are here tonight, and we appreciate you all being here.
We thank you for the opportunity to be here. We're here to recognize a couple of our contestants in our annual conservation contest who did very well this year. This is, I think, it's the first year in quite a while that I can remember that we had three contestants placed at the state level, and they went through a regional level and all the way to the state level. The theme for our conservation contest this year that was established by the supervisors like Mr. Johnson and Mr. Suthar across the state is wetlands are wonderful. And you'll be hearing a little bit more about that with the next presentation, but we've got some fantastic wetlands here in Cabarrus County. We're just mopping up an operation at Cox Mill Elementary School right now with some money that you all helped us leverage to do some stormwater improvements there and gave us a 33-acre conservation easement on the floodplain there. Also, the, between Harris Road Elementary, Harris Road Middle School, sorry, folks, Harris Road Middle School and Odell Elementary School is a wetland and a stream system that were restored, and again, that was made possible by, by the generous donation of conservation easement on that property. And so that was the inspiration, I think, for a couple of these entries that we're going to talk about. So, and the, we have a poster contest in grades three through six, and in the sixth grade poster contest, Gavin Ricard, who cannot be here tonight, he's also a, an athlete, so he's got conflicting interests tonight. His poster came in second, and Deborah Boss, who's the assistant principal for instruction at Harris Road Middle School, is holding up that poster. So if you want to know what a second-place poster at the state level looks like in the sixth-grade level, that is it. And then also, from Harris Road Middle School, for the first time this year, we had a computer design slideshow contest, basically a PowerPoint contest, and Ms. Hannah Watson is in the back of the room, who's now coming forward, back there with her, her parents and, and sibling. Hannah came in first place, first time this contest has happened, and there she is with the first-place entry, and. Hannah's, Hannah's PowerPoint presentation, in fact, did reference the, the wetland outside of her school, and that's part of what we hope that that would, was a purpose it would serve, not only to clean up water, but to be an educational amenity for the school students. So we're proud of that as well. And then last, but not least, is Ally Love, and we're, there we are, sitting with her parents and sibling. Ally came in second place in the seventh-grade public speaking contest, so, and that, that public speaking contest is incredibly competitive, and I wish we had time tonight for her to give you her speech, because she has a lot of good pointers for all of us to, to appreciate the wetlands in our county and in our state more. So these are the three, two here tonight, and the other one that won in this contest, they've, they've received accolades at, at end-of-the-year school assemblies and whatever, so we spared them bringing their plaques in one more time tonight. But if you'd join me in giving them all another round of applause for their accomplishments.
Ally and Hannah, we, we do appreciate you competing, and we're very proud of you, and Commissioner Burridge would like to give you both pins.
Ladies, before you leave, why don't you come on back here and stand beside Mr. Testerman and their other elected officials, so that your parents can take pictures? I know they've been trying hard, and they just got the back of your head.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, and next on the agenda, you're still up with us, recognition of Boy Scout Troop 38-member A.J. Smith. So if, Mr. Smith, if you'll come forward.
It was by design tonight that that troop presented the colors tonight, and this is the troop that, that A.J. Smith is a member of. A.J. came to us earlier this year with an idea for a project. He, his, he and his dad are involved in Ducks Unlimited, and they wanted to do a wood duck nesting project, and we convinced him that we had just the ideal location for that, and he was equally impressed with it, and it is the wetland that's behind Cox Mill Elementary School. The Conservation District owns a, about over 30 acres of land there that was donated to us by, or transferred to us by the conservation, the Land Trust for Central North Carolina. That is going to be the, the ground central for our conservation field school that we're in the process of establishing. I think y'all have some actions later tonight that'll help make some funding available to make, make more of that project happen. So he put in 10 wood duck nest boxes, obtained the materials, fabricated and installed, and there's a commitment from the troop to maintain those over the long haul. So that's just a fantastic wetland. It is, that is the best wetland complex in the greater Charlotte area, and if it's a, a series of beaver impoundments, if that wetland wasn't there, these heavy rains that we get, if all that water hit the Rocky River and went on down, we would have tremendous flooding. That is a good example of beavers doing us a very good favor for virtually nothing, and it's a unique place with lots of water fowl and other, other things there. So that's going to be a good location for the field school and was definitely a good location for the wood duck nest box projects. So we have a plaque for Mr. Smith, a certificate of appreciation of response, outstanding public service to the stewardship of natural resources at the Clark Creek Heron Rookery Significant Natural Heritage Area. This certificate is presented to A.J. Smith, Eagle Scout, now officially, with Boy Scout Troop 38. Congratulations.
Okay. Y'all need to turn around for another picture. Say a Kodak moment, but I don't know that, that generation will know that. And Mr. A.J., if you'll come over, please. Commissioner Burridge would like to also give you a county pin.
See Mr. Wiki behind, also reminds me to, to thank the school system for all their cooperation, both on this wood duck nesting project, because three of the wood duck boxes are on the school property, and, and for that project that we've been working on this summer to retrofit stormwater, and we couldn't have done that without their cooperation. We appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of you being here.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have informal public comments, and I have a few cards here. We will start with Price Crutchfield. And again, if you'll come up and please, you may have to adjust the microphone. If you will, let us know your name, and of course, everybody has three minutes to address the board.
Okay.
Mr. Crutchfield.
Price Crutchfield, resident of Concord. I'd like to thank this, this governmental body here for allowing me to speak out, something I'm not allowed to do over there at the city council. They shortened a dent in the bridge over there. I guess I'm going to choose to believe that most people in Cabarrus County believe that it's a sin to tell a lie. And so with that in mind, I, I'd like to ask that folks pray for the Concord Police Department, because they've been sinning. They've been lying under oath in court. Scott Newell, who's probably got a raise in rank and pay since he lied under oath on me in court to Judge Hamby, when he said, "Your Honor, he's come into restaurants and harassed my family." Scott Newell with the Concord Police Department lied under oath. He sinned. Pray for him. He needs prayer and guidance. And others over there, too, who drink liquor on school property and don't get prosecuted. Now, again, I'm asking for a divine intervention, because other means and other controls and other levies don't work. We've got to go for divine intervention in this thing and make sure that the Concord Police don't sin. Now, I've got another issue here, too. Tonight, when I was here out in the front there, I noticed that the painting, the cosmetics inside the place there, highly irregular. I've never seen anything so horrendous in my life, and since I have to help pay for it, I'd like for somebody here to go out there and look, don't, don't go out of your way, but just sometimes you ain't doing nothing. That's ridiculous. I have to pay for that. And when people in the government tells me that I'm going to be charged X amount of dollars to cut my grass, I'm not saying the county, it's the city, the extortion artist over there, who do not allow me to speak out, who call me out of order, who say I'm trying to start a riot, who say I'm disruptive, who require me to have a police escort to go pay my bills at City Hall. Some things are rye. You know, am I making any sense here? Probably not. I usually don't. But again, I'd like to thank this governmental body for allowing me to have the privilege and the right to speak out openly and freely in our great country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Martha Makin.
Hello. I'm here representing the parents and families that use transportation and the transportation system. And I have written my notes down, because I could spend three minutes on every single paragraph and be shorter than I'd like to then. But I'd like to introduce my husband, Ernest Makin, and my son, Michael, who is one of the folks who go to, it used to be the old Cabarrus Workshop, that is now no more. It is now CVO, Cabarrus Vocational Opportunities, which is a marvelous asset for our folks. The transportation system is extremely valuable, because people just cannot get there. Just a bit of background, the same semester that I received a master's degree in special education, our first child, Michael, was born with Down Syndrome. I was the director of the Arch of Cabarrus here during the 80s, and I got to know many families and individuals with different types of intellectual and developmental disabilities. In most cases, our public schools did a great job in serving our children well. But what happens when these people reach 21 and they can no longer access public education? Our V O, C V O, is providing that, after a sort of lineage there that I could go into, but I will not. It's transportation. Transportation is, is vital. The clients that work there on contract jobs, that pay them a wage, their paychecks depend on how well and how fast they work. They provide, it gives them pride and a feeling as they earn a paycheck. Taking it to the bank and cashing it is a big deal. Michael likes to get his in $1 bills, and the higher the stack, the better off he feels. So working and feeling you're doing an important thing and feeling good and making your own money is a real big, big value. I'm aware that about 60% of the transportation being provided is, so much of that is getting our folks to and from C V O, getting them there. Now, if those of you do not know, C V O is located across 29 from S&amp;D Coffee. It's about two football fields down there, and it's a nice building, and they're in the process of expanding. So we just feel really good about that site. And none of the, all the good things that are going on there and the good programs that we have and the work that they're doing, you gotta get them there first, you know? They've gotta get there. And so we need the help on getting them. Now, I've mentioned to some of you, is that my three? Now, I've mentioned to some of you, is that my three minutes? Oh, my gosh. Okay. But I would like to invite each of you, I've mentioned this to a few, but I would like to invite you to come and visit us at CVO and let us show you around and see what we've got. But thanks for some serious consideration on that good transportation that we got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to ask Martha a question. Do you have your comments written down because you can't give those to Kay if she can put them in with the minutes if you didn't get to express all of them?
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
And she'll make sure that we all get to see those. Next up, I have Robert Simmons. You may need to adjust the microphone up. You're a little bit taller. Thank you.
You're not going to like what I got to say, but please let me say it, okay? I was hurt six months ago really badly. A gang of illegal aliens jumped out, kind of harassed me and caused me to have chemical poisoning and a heart attack. And my employer, self-insured, he owns his own insurance company, he refused to pay for the medical treatment or anything. So, I've had to try and get free medical care. I'm 59 years old, I've been working 43 years. I've been on unemployment four times in my life, and I've been on food stamps four times. Unfortunately, I've been on food stamps in this county twice already. I went down to try to get on food stamps in March because I knew I wasn't going to go back to work for at least a few months. And at that time, I inquired about getting on the free medical treatment from Cabarrus County. And I realized very quickly in my dealings with DSS that the young people who were working there were not properly trained how to handle that matter. I got a lot of misinformation and was told that I had to file for disability. Because I desired to go back to work and not be on disability, I did not go that path. I went looking at charity hospitals, but I was turned down. And I kept going back to DSS and being told the same thing. Finally, after four months of being unable to find medical treatment and getting worse and worse, I went back to DSS on the phone, and I asked the question, and I got a phone call back from a person who treated me very badly. In fact, they were openly rude to me. I've encountered this problem many times in this county with DSS where people of a different race and sex than me being openly hostile to me on the telephone. So, I don't believe that they are actually monitoring the phone calls. Now, I've already given a copy of this to read to Mr. Rose. I didn't know he would be here. I want to read you four quick solutions to some of the problems that I had to deal with here. I mean, I am getting free medical care through the community care program, but it took me a long time to get on it because of misinformation, confusion, poor training at DSS. Real quick, I can hear, it is my belief that the best way to solve the problem with paperwork not being processed quickly is to dismantle the teams that are now working as teams whenever you have a problem instead of an individual. As it provides for too much anonymity in their dealings with the public, which allows them to get away with refusing to help those whom they are prejudiced against. People are not doing their job because you don't know who they are. They just don't do their job, and I filed and made complaints before. Okay, you need to monitor all phone calls, which is not being done, or else those whom are openly hostile towards us will stop providing it. You do not have any competent or corrupt management at DSS. This is no reflection on Mr. Rose, I'm just making a statement here, okay? In regards to questions about receiving help and acquiring free or low-cost medical care through DSS, all answers should be accompanied by writing information which clearly states what the actual necessary procedures for doing so are, and all refusals for this help should be in writing and signed by the caseworker. Last but not least, stop discriminating against white males during the hiring process at the Cabarrus County Department of Social Services. Legalize discrimination against white heterosexual males is the number-one reason why America is no longer number one in many areas where it used to be. Now, I got a copy of you people. I wanted to sue you guys, but I chose not to. I'm going to try to solve the problem. If you can solve this problem, you won't hear from me again. If this problem continues, I will be back, okay? Thank you for your time and trouble.
Can you do me a favor and hand that to Kay here on the end, please? And you said you gave Mr. Rose a copy?
I'll let you read this, this is the only copy. I didn't want to be here.
Okay. That's okay. We'll make sure that he gets a copy also.
I wasn't trying to embarrass him, I was just trying to solve the problem.
I understand. I just want to make sure that we make sure he gets a copy also, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have Barbara Burridge. You might have to pull that down now, he's a little bit taller. That's how I have to do is pull it down.
I am aware of how tall I am, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, it's my privilege, and I thank you for that, to stand before you. You have an awesome job, I realize that. We have a wonderful community. We want to keep it that way. This is kind of a leftover from the last meeting, which was inadvertently missed. So, if it doesn't sound proper, I still think it will apply. I come before you tonight on behalf of the Old Bethel School and some other thoughts that could possibly correlate and emphasize the importance of considering the awarding of the bid according to procedure, excuse me, to Woodson Christian University. We are definitely a throwaway generation. Therefore, the recycling and sustainable issues have become more a movement toward the Go Green, Global EPA, and eventually the Agenda 21. This will and is being forced upon us. I have many sites and contacts for verification. It has and is being implemented since 1992. This is verifiable, it is not paranoia, it is real. This massive movement is to procure advanced America as we know it, free America, and reduce it to a third-world standard. This is financed by billions, billions of dollars from private and business sectors, no government entities. It has made its way into the local city councils, Board of Commissioners, this is verifiable, and all local entities. They can ensnare with their propaganda and lies. The elected officials are too busy and just not ready to secure information on their own. I'm speaking of all. They readily rely on groups and facilitators teaching them to accept it because that is the way deception and our demise, which is death, will arrive. I can tie this into the school's need to become an institution of learning and not a green solar business. Local investment, local roots, local, excuse me, local roots of support will generate a support base and a foundation to build upon a possible historical site. In closing, I would like to expound upon a previous decision forced on senior citizens to merge transition into DSS Parks and Rec. The seniors were trashed, and only when Chairwoman Poole made a confusing concession, which it was to all of us, to not allow Parks and Rec. Staff on the premises, this was not an obvious attempt to salvage votes. Seniors are not a recyclable commodity. Let me repeat, they are not a recyclable commodity. They are a clean, viable asset and contribute to our community and population through volunteerism, dedication, commitments to others. You will never get the work that these people give that you're paying for now, you'll never get it out of them, I promise you that. Recyclable, keep these words up here. Sustainable, the terms are innumerable to disguise the plans, I'm almost, the plans to tear America down and become encumbered by our deaths and reliance on the powers to destroy our way of freedom and life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jason Osterreich. You may need to pull it back up.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I spoke with Deputy County Manager Pam Dubois today, and before I got started, I just want to say what a blessing that she is to this county and how thankful that I am for her professionalism. I value my time up here very much. It's short, but I want to take a little bit of it and just tell you thank you because I appreciate that. I called her today to sort of follow up on the surplus that was previously reported to be an estimated $14 million at the end of fiscal year 2011, 2012. And what she told me was that the surplus was actually going to be between $16 and $18 million, so between $2 and $4 million greater than what was estimated in the beginning of the budget. Last meeting, we learned that the Commission kept for itself a discretionary fund of $650,000 that it can use to fund any new project that it wants. In previous years, we heard that the Commission has kept as low as $50,000, but for this year, it kept $650,000. So, it begs asking again, with a $30 million-plus reserve fund, a $16 to $18 million surplus, and a $650,000 discretionary fund, why did we raise the tax rate 10% again in this economy? That doesn't make any sense. I want to pivot away from that and talk more globally about how we can maybe resolve some of these issues. And one of the things I've noticed about how political entities have gone away from the people is that they take taxpayer money and they put new names onto taxpayer money, which makes it more palatable to spend. We call things like matching grants, federal grants, discretionary funds, previously budgeted items. We need to remember, let's take all those labels off of taxpayer money. It's all taxpayer money. And we need to ask ourselves, right now, this is taxpayer money, is this the best use of this taxpayer money that we can make at this moment, no matter what the name? And I want to talk about two examples that have come up recently. The July 2, 2012 workshop, the Commission discussed a $7.9 million federal grant with a $4.9 million federal, it was a $7.9 million total expenditure with a $4.9 million grant. A Commissioner said, "I'm concerned about spending $7.9 million over three years, and there's a lot of fluff there. And that $4.9 million is coming from housing and urban development, which we know where that money is coming from," to which Commissioner Burridge said, "It's coming from China. I appreciate that." That passed four to one. At this last workshop, they talked about buying new vehicles. Some of the vehicles that we're replacing are vehicles that have 106,000 miles on them and from 2004. Two Commissioners made comments about the ridiculousness of that. One Commissioner said, "200,000 is the new 100,000." One Commissioner said, "With vehicles lasting longer, if y'all could visit the policy of replacing the vehicles just to flip it out after 100,000 miles, I've got three or four vehicles that have 120,000 miles plus." That passed three to two with both of those Commissioners voting for buying the new vehicles. I think we need to move away from the reclassification of taxpayer money and just call it taxpayer money because that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have old business. Mr. Marshall, do you want to add anything? I mean, I can give an update on the upset bid, or I don't know if there's anything that you wish to share. I think most everybody is aware of, I know that all the Commissioners are, about the Old Bethel School upset bid process.
I can already tell.
I will say Commissioner Burridge would like for it to continue, what'd you say, six months? Because if it keeps going for six months, then it keeps getting higher and higher. And so, I'll give him, I'll give him that quote.
That's higher than the dollar we were going to take a few months ago.
There you go. So, do you want to talk about where we are now, or?
I will. By the process you authorized, each time we receive an upset bid, we re-advertise a new 10-day period, and we did receive an upset bid on Friday. Ms. Honeycutt, I know can give us the exact amount. In fact, I believe she included it as an addition to your agenda. So, we've opened a new 10-day period for upset bids, and it will only be once we've gone 10 days without an upset bid that we'll bring, then bring that back to you with that bidder for your approval.
And for everybody to know, the current bid is at 20,000. The next bid, the deadline on that, I believe, is Monday, next Monday, at 3:00 p.m. Is that correct? Okay, I know. I'm pretty certain that's right. What's in our agenda packet is the one prior to. The current bid is 20,000. The next upset bid, there is a formula, would be at $21,050, which we would need to receive here prior to 3 o'clock on next Monday, the 27th. If any of the current bidders or somebody new would like to get involved, I believe we now have about four different entities that are looking at the facility. So, I am going to be optimistic and hope that that is a good indication that, at least in some sectors of our community, things are looking better. And I hope that Commissioner Burridge gets his wish and that it keeps going on for a few more months so that it keeps going up and up. So, that would make Commissioner Burridge happy, I believe.
Maybe we'll get it to the tax pay.
That might take more than six months. It's a good idea, but that might take more than six months, but.
I just wonder why we didn't do this six years ago.
Well, I believe that we've tried. We have tried and nobody bid, and that's why I think that at least four different entities must be seeing things looking better.
Right.
For them to be interested. So, if there's another entity interested, by all means, please contact us and any of the other three. If they would like to upset the bid, they have until next Monday, 3 o'clock. Okay, next up, we have under old business, item number two. And let me get to it. We have the solid waste ordinance, and this is on for the second reading or second motion. So, is there any discussion concerning this item, which we talked about a lot at the last month's meeting?
I'll just reiterate what I said in our previous meeting last month, is I do believe this should have went out for bid to get the most competitive rate, and I think it's doing a disservice to the citizens by not doing that.
I think Kevin and Kyle are here. Does anyone have questions of staff members?
Why was this not put out for bid, busy with other people wanting to bid it? I thought when you first presented the test that there was nobody wanting to bid it.
There's a couple reasons why this wasn't put out to bid. We've been reviewing this for about a year with Republic when they first came up to us about renewing the contract and discussing expanded curbside collection. One, and as we went through the negotiations, we felt we had a pretty good, solid deal with them, plus the fact that this also involves the disposal portion of the contract. Now, Republic owns the Speedway landfill. We just felt that this was going to be the best disposal contract we can get, knowing that if the waste was going to have to stay close by and go to that landfill, that we get the best deal from them.
Did y'all talk, talk to the other companies that wanted to bid it?
We've had conversations with Waste Pro.
And so, I understand.
Excuse me, the other advantage that Republic does give us, that I brought up in the last month's meeting, is the fact that they waive tipping fees for any waste that we take from our C&amp;D landfill to them. Now, this offers the citizens a second option. They do not have to subscribe with Republic. They can bring their waste up to our landfill for nominal fee. I believe it's like $6 for up to four bags, and if you bring a couple bags recyclables, that fee, you get that credit, so you're basically paying nothing except for the transportation to get up there. That is one service that no other vendor could, or could provide us at this time.
Didn't the city of Concord swap from Republic to Waste Pro?
They did. They also have the advantage of being the host city agreement with the Speedway landfill, meaning that all tipping fees are waived. So, they're playing with an even playing field that every vendor knows when they put in a bid to collect waste from the city of Concord, takes it to the Speedway for no charge.
If I understand correctly, we had the contract which had an option to extend for another term?
That is correct.
And that's what this is. It is extending an option. I mean, that was part of the original contract, is that there was an option to extend.
Correct.
And so, in negotiations with that, you talked to all of the Commissioners, and all of the Commissioners gave you the indication to proceed to renegotiate that contract and get the best deal that we could get.
Correct.
So, any other comments or questions?
We did, and I agree with you that we did all give the okay, but at that time, we didn't have all the information to make a decision of that sort.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do have a couple comments. I think that, you know, and I hear Commissioner Burridge and Commissioner Mead are both in their concerns and wanting to go out for bid, and then, of course, we were presenting last month with, it was presented in a political context of how we should go out for bid for the contract and with, and go out and ask for bids from these other providers. And I know there's two votes, and the decision we're making tonight is whether to approve the contract that our staff has spent a year working on and fine-tuning and negotiating with Republic over this. The first question that came up was whether or not we wanted to go to bid to begin with. That was something we did over a year ago. Now, I appreciate the fact that we wanted, maybe, you know, a couple of our Commissioners want to go back and say, "Let's go out for bid." But my, to me, it's a question of fairness to Republic. It's just like in any business situation, if I'm a businessperson and I go and I put in a bid on a, for a, I put together a bid proposal on a contract, and then, not only do, I'm told at the last minute after I've already put my best proposal forward for this organization, that not only are we're going to put it out for bids, but because it's public record, now. we're going to put it out for bids, but because it's public record, now we're going to give what you did and what you worked on for a year, and we're going to turn around and give that to your competitors for them to do. And of course, what's going to happen, it's going to come in at a lower cost. So that's my concern. I mean, I, I agree with what y'all are saying. And I think that a year ago, and in the future, I think this is good for anybody bidding on government business. And when we, next round we come up, is when it comes time to start talking about this, then yeah, at that point in time, if we have those folks coming up to us saying that, "I think you're about to start negotiating for contract extension," it's, you know, "We would like to get a chance, shot at it." I think at that point in time, I think it's, it would be something that we should entertain. But it's kind of like we're, like, at the 10-yard line, when we should have been back at the other 20 discussing this, because we really, that decision has passed. I mean, the decision we're at now is, do we approve the contract or not? Not whether we go out for bid.
Well, personally, I think when you don't have all the information, I don't, I don't think, I had all the information when I agreed to it however long ago. It was brought up before us in closed session. It is my only complaint with it. You know, I don't mind you voting, vote on it, then, you know, pass it.
Well, if you don't have all the information, then why was everybody in agreement to go with Republic in regards to negotiation? I mean, if this is your concern today, why wasn't that your concern two months ago, six months ago, nine months ago, a year ago?
When it was first brought up to us, my understanding was, there was nobody else to bid it. And, and that was what I was left to think. Not only was the Commissioner Meacham, is that's what he thought or not, but that's what I thought.
I remember both of these gentlemen coming in and saying, "There are others out there. The problem is," or not the problem, but the concern is, that Republic has provided with this with very good service. They've been in business, in this business for a number of years. We are able to save the taxpayers' money with tipping fees. We're able to save the taxpayers' money with the ability that they have a choice. They can choose Republic, or they can go do it on their own. They also have the choice to save money in regards to recycling. They don't have to do the recycling if they don't want to. They also, Republic also guarantees that if there, if this landfill fills up, that they are still going to provide service to us at the price that we've negotiated. Nobody else has done that. All of that was presented to us. Each and every one of us had opportunities to ask these two gentlemen any questions we wanted to, and they answered every single one of them that we had. And to come back today and say, "Well, we need to change it. We need to go out and outbid it," that is a slap in the face of Republic. And these two gentlemen, they've worked on this the whole time. We had that information. And if, if it was not understood, if it was not received, if it, if there's anything there, that's not these gentlemen's fault, nor anybody else up here.
I didn't say it was anybody's fault. What I'm saying is, you sitting there saying that it's saving the taxpayers' money, and you don't know that because you didn't put it out for bids. There's no way you can sit there and tell me that you know for sure.
Kevin, is there not savings of the taxpayers' money right now?
Yes, with this, with this renewal of the contract, we will be saving with recycling and disposal, $1.77 per month per subscriber.
And that's a minimum?
Yes.
Current contract. Now, if there was a new bid, and there's a lower bid, it could save potentially more.
How much?
For the taxpayers. We don't know, because we didn't go through that process. That's the whole issue. And that's the whole thing, is that everybody said, "Republic is providing us with the service we're having now, and we're able to make savings there." Neither you nor Commissioner Burridge raised that as an issue a year ago, at six months ago. It was only raised two months ago. Because the way it's presented is that there was no one else interested. We're not going out to bid. You know, if we, if we knew there was other interest, then certainly.
These two gentlemen said there's other people out there that would bid on it.
I don't recall that, but okay.
I don't recall it being said either. I didn't know anything about it until I got a, about two months ago, two people from two other companies sat in our work session and handed me cards. And that's the first I knew about it, that I know of now. You know, y'all sat here and say you did it. Maybe you did. I don't know. Let's go back. I'd like to go back and see the records where it was all put on, put on the, you know, where it's all on paper.
Was it not brought up in the closed session, wasn't Waste Pro in business in Cabarrus County?
Yes.
And Waste Pro did work for our Concord? And this was discussed in the closed session?
It was, you told us in closed session that we, that there was other companies that would want to bid on this. That was told to us. I don't want to put you on the spot, but since Commissioner White did, then we'll go ahead and follow up.
We expressed that there was other vendors that we could go out to.
The, the, but I think, and I'm sure, I think, the question before us tonight is not whether or not we're going out to bid. The question for us, and I will make the motion that we approve the contract, because that's what this question is about tonight. It's not about whether or not we're going out to bid. It's about whether we approve this contract with Republic. You can vote against this tonight. It's fine. It just means you're not approving the contract. It doesn't mean you're supporting going out for bid, and you're making a statement going out to bid. That decision, like I said, was made. I've made decisions before on this board and realized, and went later down the road, that maybe that wasn't the best decision to make, and that's fine. But, and I don't think we're ever going to move beyond a 3-2 vote tonight on this. I don't know why much we argue and all that.
I'll second your motion to vote on it and just go ahead and get it out of the way.
Well, it needs to be a motion to adopt the ordinance, because that's, it's not just to adopt the contract.
It's a motion to adopt the ordinance acknowledging new conditions of existing franchise agreement and renewing the franchise agreement through December 31st, 2017.
That's my motion.
That's your motion. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes three to two.
And Madam Chair, my point of order is that for those out there that feel like they want to bid on this in the future, if it's, what is the date? Is January 1st, 2017? We'll start, what, January 1st, 2016, or somewhere in December, so November, December 2016, 2015, we should, people should be coming forward to talk to the board about whether or not we want to go out to bid on this.
And for clarifications on this particular agreement, is there an option to extend it another time? Or is this, is it definite that it will have to go out for bid at the next time?
The current contract says, calls for extension of one five-year period. That's all it says. So I'm assuming at the end of this five-year period, it has to go out.
It won't have to go out for, okay. Okay, next up is our consent agenda. The one thing that I do want to point out is item number two for the tower, communication tower at Mount Pleasant. We would like to table that to the September meeting so that we can do the proper notification on that particular item. We had discussed that at our, at our work session. So is.
Okay, I move for approval of the consent agenda without item, without it F2 removed and tabled.
Table it into the September.
February work session.
Regular meeting, okay. So I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, we have new business, and we have Kelly Sifford here. We do need to hold a public hearing. We will, however, not have any further action required after the public hearing.
That is correct.
If you can introduce this particular item.
Every year, at the end of the year, for the home program, we analyze how much money we spent and how many units we completed. We did get a late start this year due to a late release of funds from HUD, so we didn't start till December. We did complete one unit. We expended $59,000. Although, as I pointed out, the work session, that was not all on one unit. There were some rollover costs from last year and some administrative costs for analysis of impediment study that was done in conjunction with Concord, and we all shared the cost on that. Are there any questions?
Okay, if there are no questions, we do need to hold a public hearing. So at this time, I would open for a public hearing concerning the home, H-O-M-E, for the year ending 2011, 2012. Okay? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And again, there is no further action required on this item. We are just required to have a public hearing. Next up, we have from Human Services Transportation Division, Steve Koot is here. There you are. I knew I saw you back there, Steve. And he would like to talk to us about the JARC grant and related budget amendment.
Good evening, everyone. My reason here tonight is just to explain a little bit about the JARC grant. The, I think, the, the budget amendment speaks for itself. This concerns our grant that was approved from the, from several months ago. And to piggyback on what Ms. Makin said, right now, we're going, at the end of this, the three years we've been running this grant, I've got some figures. First year, we, we carried 4,000 people, which included one month of only 22 folks, the very first month we had that. This, this last year, which ends for us in October, because that's when it started, we're going to carry over 20,000 people. Probably 20, now that's, when I say 20,000 people, that's 20,000 trips, approximately which 12,000 of those are for Cabarrus vocational rehab, includes trips to them from home to vocational rehab and back in the afternoon. The two positions that we're asking for in the amendment were put in the grant. Right now, we have, I've driven it myself and have 14 new folks for the CVO out toward the Harrisburg area, which we've had to sort of close off because we didn't have enough people to carry them. Driven and mapped that route. We've got 14 folks right now waiting to get onto that list, which a new driver in the morning, a new driver in the afternoon would be required to do that. There's more folks than we can carry right now with them, with drivers we've got. We're doing, I think the drivers do a real good job of that and without complaining and carrying on. But the inception of carrying the CVO has made a big difference in the folks that we've carried. And it gives you a reward too for, you know, for carrying the folks that, that give them an opportunity, like Ms. Makin said, to earn a living. I like stacking my dollar bills up in the pile too. I won't get into that. But it, it does give us a, sometimes you do some of the stuff we do without a reward. You get that every day carrying these folks to vocational rehab.
And just for the public, JARC stands for Job Access Reverse Commute. And this is a grant that will provide funding for two new drivers, one full-time and one part-time. And goes through, funded for a two-year period ending June 30th, 2014. As long as the funds are received by the county, the positions would continue, excuse me, would continue to be funded. We do need a motion to adopt the budget amendment and approve two new driver positions. Again, one full-time driver and one part-time driver, grade 57, step one. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
This is a federal grant?
Yes, sir. The federal grant is 50%. We do have a, we're asking for one new vehicle, which would be $5,800 for us that's part federal and part state. 80, 10.
How many vehicles you got now?
We have five that we run with the LINKS program.
So at what percentage, and you touched on this, I believe it was 12,000 riders are going to the vocational.
When, when this comes, right now, we're at 18,000 riders, trips for this past year that we've carried. By the time we carry, get the August totals and the September totals, we'll be over 20,000 people. And since we've started carrying vocational rehab, there are about 60% or neighborhood of 12,000 riders.
Of the riders, okay. And so what is the remaining 40% of the riders?
People that we've been carrying to and from work. We run through, another thing I should have touched on earlier, we run through Harrisburg, Mount Pleasant, and Midland. I think somebody had at the last, when we talked about this, trying to approve the grant, somebody mentioned, "Well, why don't they just get on the bus in Harrisburg or Mount Pleasant?" The bus doesn't go to Harrisburg, Mount Pleasant, or Midland. CK rider buses. So, and we do have connection. We carry people every day from Mount Pleasant, Harrisburg, into the CK rider hub to go other places that we can't carry.
Okay. These, the 40% of the riders, are they regular riders, or do, is it people that come on to the system for six months and they buy a car and then provide their own transportation?
We have quite a few that we provided transportation till they got transportation. Well, we have some that, that continue to ride with us, and some that sort of age out for one reason or another on there. But we have, you know, I don't know the percentage of people that we carry the same folks every day, but some of those, some that get transportation, some that use us on a regular basis.
Right, okay. I certainly understand, you know, the transportation to the vocational site, and I think that's a good program. And I understand that. I, I wish there was a way, and this may be something that County Manager Ben, Ben Rose may be able to touch on, is there a way to separate that, where we have transportation for the vocational site, and then the other job, the other 40% of the riders, there's a way to separate that? Is that?
Not quite sure. You mean, in separate grants, or?
Well, and I understand that may not work with this grant, but, you know, the vocational opportunity, the, the riders who use that program, is there a way to separate that as into its own program within transportation and being an entity in itself in transportation? Does that make, make sense?
I'm not quite sure. I, I think if you, if you apply for the grant, the guidelines of the grant require you to open it up to all who need that service. Right now, the majority that need the service are with the, with Rowan.
Okay.
At, at one time, we did that with the county till they, till the Odell Workshop closed and they moved to Rowan County.
Yeah, we, we actually did that. We funded that through local money. At, at that time, it was not a grant. We just funded that type of transportation through local money. When the, when the center closed, some of that money moved into different programs to expand those. And that's, that's with local money. That's not tied to a grant. So if it's local money, then, then there's, there's very few, there are, there are no restrictions on who you pick up and who you take and where you take them to. That's totally up to you as a board. But if you, when you're applying for grants, they're, they're going to have to be.
Okay.
Open to all.
And so you say you have 14 people on the waiting list? Is it?
We have the, we've talked with you, since the grant was approved, they had asked us, you know, who we could serve with that. Well, they had folks from out Harrisburg to the Roberta part of the county toward Harrisburg. They had 14 folks that were waiting in that area. 14 is about the max we can carry on one of those vans.
Okay.
And so that's, that's why. They still have other folks that need transportation that they're getting somewhere or the other. But these are folks that, some of these folks are the same ones we picked up in the same situation when the county was supplying the funds for that.
Right, okay.
What, do they pay to ride?
Dollar each way, which certainly doesn't, you know, cover the cost of the, of the grant.
They can't afford to pay no more than that on the.
We have some that can't afford to pay that.
That's working?
At the Cabarrus Vocational Rehab, yes.
I ain't talking about the vocational rehab. They would ride free.
No. Everybody else pays, everybody else pays a dollar. And, and they pay a dollar a trip also. When one of them at a time comes up and doesn't have the dollar for one reason or another at the vocational rehab, we don't put them off the bus.
Well, the only thing bothers me about it is, it's, it's a federal grant. Federal government's got to borrow the money to give it to us. County's got $75 million cash on hand. And we talking about borrowing or taking the grant for, what is it, $68,000?
For the two drivers, yes, sir.
And time you pay the interest back to, on, the time we pay the interest back on the federal debt, you know, that's going to cost us over 100,000. I, I can't see doing it myself.
So you, are you proposing to reject it, but supplant the $68,000 by county money?
I'd rather do that. That way you pay it. You don't have to borrow it. You ain't paying no interest on it.
Is there a way to give priority to the riders for the vocational opportunity within the program itself, if we were not to approve this, to just give priority to those individuals?
We, I'm, I'm not, I'm not certain I know what you mean. We do give them priority. We get them first thing in the morning, cut off the other operations at the point to bring them back in the afternoon.
So the individuals that are going to the vocational site, they have priority?
They're on a regular schedule every day to where they get there and get back. Yes, sir.
Okay. What, do, and I know that I've seen, heard of this happening in other parts of the state. Do we have any employers that are actually underwriting and, and paying for the service to get selected employees that may not have transportation to work to their workplace? get selected employees that may not have transportation to work to their workplace? We don't have it.
Not to my knowledge, but I'm.
Okay, I've seen that in some other parts of the state where we have employers actually pay that, you know, pay for the cost of transporting those employees to their workplace.
Yeah, we don't have any in our program here that are doing that. However, the workshop, Rowan, until, while, when they reestablished this location in Cabarrus County, they provided volunteers and actually provided drivers for the first, I believe, four, six months until the next budget cycle, until funding was in place. So they did, they did make that effort so that they could get the program going.
What is the, and I, this is a crazy question, y'all can answer, you may not know the answer to it. What it would be that, and I've, because I've not used it myself, but I imagine it's not cheap. What would be a typical cab fare from Mount Pleasant into Concord and back?
$25.
$25, okay. So if I'm making, say, $7 per hour at a job, working eight hours that day, $56, half of my pay would go to pay in just a cab fare. Is that one-way or round-trip? One-way. So I could very well spend every bit of money I'm making one day to be used to pay my cab fare back and forth from work.
For sure.
So it would not pay me if I lived out there and I did not have this program, it would not pay me to even go to work. So I could just sit at home and go in to see Ben and his crew and file for every benefit I could get, but I would have the initiative to get in and go into work. And this is, provides a way for me to overcome that obstacle that I don't have transportation.
Well, my concern's not about the 60% of the riders that are going to the vocational site. I think that's a, I think that's excellent. And that should be free. I mean, that's an excellent opportunity for them, and I understand that. My concern is, is for the other 40% of the riders, if these are working adults, that the government is transporting them to work. You know, I, myself, I get up and I go to work in the morning. Whenever my vehicle is, you know, out of commission, I have to rely on a family member or a friend or someone to try to assist me in getting to work.
My, one response to what you just mentioned was having the 60% of the folks that go to CVO, we couldn't do that without the grant, the way it is right now. And when we take them in in the morning and bring them back in the afternoon, these folks that drive them in the morning and afternoon don't sit around and drink coffee. They're, they're picking up the other folks and transporting people from Mount Pleasant and from Midland, from Harrisburg into town and to jobs. When time comes to pick these folks back up to CVO, they stop. They pick up the folks from CVO, take them back home.
Yeah, and that's, as I said, I'm not concerned about the vocational site. I'm concerned about the other 40% that's using the system.
Do you feel like somehow, no, that those people don't deserve it to work? I mean, if they want to work, they should just be responsible for getting their own transportation, however they can get there, and if they don't, then they just stay at home?
Yeah, I'm responsible for my own transportation to get to where I need to go.
Okay.
And that's the reason you work hard and you have a goal to, you know, save your money, purchase a car, and get yourself to work. If this opportunity was not there for those individuals, they're going to find a way. The natural way is if you're determined and you have determination, you're going to make sure it gets done.
And I see those folks.
The government's role is not to transport people to work.
Okay, and I can tell you that when it takes, if it would take me, if I were living in Mount Pleasant, I did not have a car to get to work, I could have a choice. I could pay all of my salary, okay? If I'm making $7 an hour, I can pay all, 100% of my salary to transport myself back and forth to work, which makes it meaningless to go to work. So the second option is I can stay at home and do nothing and just file for whatever benefits I can get from the government, which is available to me. Or third is, is that if I work an eight-hour job, I can take the two hours it would probably take to walk from Mount Pleasant to Concord, and that eight-hour day becomes a 12-hour day. And I know people have done that. And I see people, I saw a gentleman the other day walking up Church Street that was headed to work. I believe that he had his materials, he was going to work at McDonald's, and I saw him down just about at Trappman's Barbecue, walking towards McDonald's. So there's people that do that. And I admire the people, and I admire people that also participate in this because, again, if they, the only difference is they don't live on a bus line. If they lived in town, they would be, they would go to the near CK rider and catch the bus. But this gives a service to those outlying parts of the county where those people live that the alternative might be just to sit at home. And once the gravy train starts, then there you have another person, another cycle, and you're breaking, I believe you're helping break in the cycle of poverty that goes across generations. And I understand what you're saying, because in a perfect world, everybody would get up, they would go to work, they would earn their own way, they would earn their own keep, they would provide their own transportation, they would save the money as much as they could, that six extra bucks they get in their pocket because, after they pay for transportation, and eventually they can afford to buy themselves a car. And lo and behold, in this day and age, you've got to have about $4,000 to buy a decent car to get back and forth to work. So I guess they, you know, in about 10 years, they'll get them a car. They'll work hard.
If you're, if you're a disciplined individual, then you can certainly prioritize your spending and make certain what's most important. If you have determination, you can make.
I know, I know, so.
Okay, we have before us.
I'd make a motion to adopt the budget amendment and approve two new driver positions, one full-time driver and one part-time driver, grade 57, step one.
Okay, I have a motion at this time. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comment?
Yeah, there is. I like, we've been throwing around CVO and RVO, and we've been chastised by at least a couple of members that come to our meetings regularly. CVO is the Cabarrus Vocational Opportunities. RVO is Rowan Vocational Opportunities, so that if you didn't know that, that's the acronyms that are being thrown around. The CVO and the RVO are, I know the person that is, that is in part of that. I don't know, I don't think he runs both of them, but Glenn McDonald does a tremendous job. And if you would not be able, well, I don't really mean, he's got a huge heart. And he has a huge heart, and he fights hard for the people so that, and he does a tremendous job. And I think through his efforts as well as others' efforts out there, they've already expanded. They went into the new building right past S&amp;D Coffee, I think, 30 months ago, maybe 24 months ago, and they're already expanding because of what they're able to do. And what they're able to do out there is help individuals that need an opportunity to have self-worth. And it's very similar to individuals that are earning minimum wage as to getting out of the house and working and being able to provide for their family as best they can in a very difficult, very difficult time. But to, I would like to say that the people that go to CVO and RVO don't pay, but I think at a dollar a trip, so it's $2 round-trip, I think the people that work there have a great deal of self-worth saying, I paid for this. I got myself to work. I got myself home from work. And I will never, never know what that is like, because I've been blessed to get myself to work like you, Commissioner Meesmer, and everybody else up here. But to have, to know the value and to be very happy about what you've done by being able to stack dollar bills up, and however high they are or however low they are, it doesn't matter. It's the idea that they're there. That, to me, is well worth this program. And to split it out, we've heard tonight, you cannot split it out, because if you split it out, you cannot provide for the people that are attending CVO. I would say, I think that we should all pass this, and I understand your concern, Commissioner Burge. And when we start looking at grants and we, and what Mr. Osterreich said earlier, is that when we start looking at grants, we have to start looking, I think, if we're going to look at one, you got to look at all of them. If that's the case, then we do not, then we purchase our own school buses, because right now, the school buses are purchased by the state, the first school bus, if I'm correct. Does that matter?
We purchased the first one.
We purchased the first one, they purchased the rest. So now every time there's a replacement, we don't ask for a replacement from the state. We pay it out of our own pocket. If we, and then you start going down the line, and what you realize is that it is very difficult to, to keep a budget where it is without the assistance of others. And if my tax money, which is, is too high, I agree, is going to Washington to come back, I've got to figure out how I can keep that as low as I can, or at least we're receiving benefit. And I'll tell you this, I don't know, $68,000, that ends up being pennies compared to taxes, but I'll pay that to get Michael to work. I will do that gladly. And if that come, if that cannot be done, I'll pay more, because that is important to me, that Michael and the other Michaels out there, and the Jennifers or the Jills, get that opportunity to find that self-worth. And I'll be happy to do that, because that's what we should do. We've heard the preacher tonight praying, talking about our responsibility to our community and to one another, and I think this is an example of that, and I'm going to vote for it.
I don't have a problem with the program. The problem I have is we keep taking federal dollars that we know that the federal government is borrowing 40 cents of every dollar that they take in. Our great-grandchildren are going to wind up having to pay, well, no, the country's just going to go bankrupt, that's what's going to happen. And we just keep on doing this stuff. I don't have a problem with taking the money out of the county budget and funding this thing, but I do have a problem with taking this grant.
Okay, at this time, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. And also failed to mention earlier, we would like, I'd like to recognize City of Concord Councilman Lamar Barrier, who is here, I believe, for this particular item on our agenda. So welcome and thank you for joining us tonight. The next item that we have, G3, NCDOT request to purchase a right-ofway. Jonathan Marshall is here and Lynn Whitke is here. We've talked about this also at our work session, and I know you had a specific question about it, which I think has been addressed, but Mr. Marshall.
This is a request from NCDOT to purchase approximately .6 acres of property at Winkler Middle School for the extension of George Law's Parkway. We had, the county had purchased that property for the school to provide for an emergency access from the, of course, the school is accessed off Weddington Road, but that is the sole access in. So in the event of emergency, we had purchased a strip of land to gain access to Concord Farms Road, and ultimately with the construction of George Law's Parkway to that road. So we were noticed, we were provided notice by the state that they were purchasing this right-ofway. Both Mr. Whitke and I independently actually had asked the right-ofway agent to ensure that we would still have that emergency access. Barry Moose has sent a letter, the Division 10 engineer has sent a letter to us assuring us of that access, and that's included as an addition to your agenda. The other thing I will note on this is it has been the past practice of the Board of Commissioners that proceeds like this would benefit the school affected. I think that goes back to actually when 49 was widened in front of Central Cabarrus, that money was provided to Central. So that was included as part of your consideration.
Okay, any questions concerning the request from NCDOT for the right-ofway? And again, you will see on page 204 of the agenda, the letter that we have that does indicate that there is, will be the emergency egress and ingress available to the school system. Any questions? If there are no questions at this time, I'd accept a motion to approve NCDOT right-ofway purchase, authorize the County Manager to complete the required documents and approve the related budget amendment pending approval from the authorizing financial institution.
Shall move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. And let's see, you're here for the next item too?
Here for the next item also.
Which is concerning NC Cooperative Extension service request for special leave.
We've been noted, provided a notification and request from Sherry Schwab, who is the Director of County Operations for North Carolina Cooperative Extension, that with, along with the state budget, there was an approved additional 40 hours of leave for state employees. Of course, our arrangement with cooperative extension is that we share the cost of those employees, for the most part, 50/50. There is some difference in that with some employees. So they have asked us, as part of their request is essentially, with that 40 hours additional leave, because we share the cost of those employees, do we approve of our prorated share of that? And we're taking this before the Commission to consider. So essentially, as an example, if an employee is 50% state funding and 50% county funding, if you do not approve this request, then they would be granted two and a half days of leave as opposed to the 40. If you do approve it, they would receive the full 40. Of course, there's, that would.
Not 45 days of leave, 40 hours.
That's right, five days, 40 hours, yes, not 40 days. Thank you.
See a bunch of smiles over here.
I was going to say, they're all pretty happy. Of course, if there was a 60/40 split, you know, it would be, it would be slightly different from that.
So what this amounts to is that for state, state employees, the legislature has given five days of leave. And so discussions, commissioners on, again, if it's a 50/50 or doing that part, are we okay with the cooperative extension having those full five days or a prorated share based on the state formula of their salary?
I just, I wanted to add two other things. Ms. Boston, Debbie Bostas is here, should you have any questions of her. In addition, the one-day additional leave that you granted county employees with your budget did not affect cooperative extensions. They were not granted that.
Who pays it, county or the state?
Roughly 50/50.
Oh, it depends on the position.
Depends on the position, but roughly 50% state, 50% county. It could be 60/40.
So basically, if we don't do this, then basically you get two and a half days versus five days.
Correct.
But they still get the two and a half days. And we still pay half that?
No.
No.
Okay.
State pays it.
Okay.
Whatever portion of their salary a state paid, that percentage of five days they would receive, because that's what the state's already providing.
So we were just, our decision is to whether they awarded them the other two and a half days that was part of the state budget for every other state.
Two or two and a half days, depending on what their funding percentage is.
Can we really afford it? Two months ago, we was having to close the libraries and the parks.
They, as far as. No, because we voted past the budget 3-2, so we don't have to close libraries and the parks.
You wasn't going to have to, no way.
The idea behind this is that their salary's not being increased. They could pick a day that supervisors would approve where they, you know, didn't have some major event going on that they had to be a part of, and they would approve that they would get another day away. This is, and it is five days only for this year, it does not carry over to next fiscal year, and you use it or lose it. If you don't, if they don't use it because they're very busy, then it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't go into retirement, doesn't roll into sick time, it doesn't roll into anything, it's gone. Unless somebody retires this year, and then it would be an element of the retirement if they retired this year, but that would be the only way that it would get paid out. Otherwise, it's a use it or lose it kind of idea.
And you are correct. It is the first leave used, it is the first opportunity, and there is no direct payout unless someone retires. And so, yes, absolutely.
So it just won't accrue at the end of the year and be added in?
No. So if they want to take off election day because they want to go work the polls for somebody, they could use this instead of a vacation day, for an example.
Correct.
And it would be coded so that the state would know that that's where it came from.
It is, it is in our leave system through the state, coded as special leave. It is the first leave used, it can't be shared, it can't be used for anything else, and at the end of the fiscal year, if you did not use it, you lose it, yes. But this was as a direct result of the fact that for four years, state employees did not receive any salary increases at all whatsoever. And so this is a recognition of an opportunity to provide a little additional incentive to continue to maintain state employees working in those jobs, not leaving to go to other industry, et cetera, because there's not been any compensation consideration for four years.
By my calculations, Madam Chair, this is equivalent, if it's four years, is equivalent, then what our share is equivalent to two tenths of 1% increase is what it amounts to. So if you analyze that over four years.
Other comments? Do I have a motion to?
I'd motion to agree to award the proportional match of the special leave as it relates to cooperative extension employees.
Okay, we have a motion to agree to award the proportional match for the special leave. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item we have, make sure I'm right. Appointments to boards for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we commonly call that JCPC. Let's see, we need, I'm going to do all these at one time, I guess. Let's see, we need, I'm going to do all these at one time, I guess. A motion to remove Scott Stoker, Chief Court Counsel or Designee Erica Nesbit, County Manager Designee Amira Peruzic, Student Less Than 18 from the JCPC roster due to resignations. Also to appoint Emily Coltrane to the JCPC, representing the Chief Court Counsel or his designee, to complete an unexpired term ending September 30th, 2012, and a subsequent two-year term ending September 30th, 2014. Also to appoint Susan Farrington to the JCPC, representing the county manager or his designee, to complete an unexpired term ending September 30th, 2013. And also to reappoint Susan Burns, School Superintendent Designee, Luann Andrews, Sheriff Designee, Helen Leek, Mental Health Designee, Perry Gabriel, Active Living in Parks, Felicia Wilson at Large, and Angela Ward at Large for two-year terms ending September 30th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And as was alluded to earlier, we do have a number of vacancies on county boards and committees. And one that I would like to point out in particular, Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Board. We need a family member of a person with mental illness, addiction, or intellectual developmental disorder to serve on that board. We also need a community stakeholder, which would be a private citizen or agency representative to serve on that board. We have a number of boards, and that is posted on our website, that we need positions and people to fill. So please consider serving the county in one of those positions. Next up, we have, let's see, you have in your packet also, let's see, sorry, reports from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. I asked Commissioner Meesmer, he was kind enough to represent us this past week at NCACC. And he, I asked him if he would give us a report on the events, and I know he spoke to the youth council and wanted to see what you had to share.
The NCACC, which is the Association of Counties on the state level, met in Raleigh at the end of last week. I attended that and represented the county on behalf of the County Commission Board. While there, I was asked to give a presentation on our county's citizenship-focused program, which is where the 10th grade students come to the Government Center, learn about the government, about the county government, and each of the departments. So there was other county staff, county commissioners that sat in on that session, explained to them exactly what all we do. And we had a good bit of interest in other counties wanting to model that program. Also explained about our youth council, gave a presentation on that. And we're, I believe, one of four or five only counties that have youth councils in the state. So definitely got some interest in that. At the same time, there was a youth summit that was going on in parallel with the, the conference. And we had a representative from Cabarrus County Go, Seth Bolenbecker was our representative there. And that's an opportunity for state, I mean, from youth all around the state to, to come to Raleigh and learn about the state government and exactly what all that entails. So it's proud of that. That, that's the, that was the conference itself. There's a couple of other things I wanted to touch on. Serving as a board member of the Department of Social Services, I've been proud that our board, we have discussed this on and off for the past few months about food stamp fraud. We are, we had a preliminary meeting with the District Attorney's Office, and we're going to try to work through prosecuting individuals that are committing food stamp fraud. So I was pretty proud that the DSS Board voted unanimously to move forward with that. And I'm sure I'll have more to report on that in the upcoming months, but as I said, we're working on that.
And to piggyback on what you all said, for the, concerning the youth council, we do have five vacant positions. And I apologize, I do not have the schools in front of us, but we do need some youth to fill out the positions. It's a good thing when you have seniors who graduate, but it does leave spots open. So if there's any youth out there, not just adults, we have all kinds of positions available. At this time, commissioners, any other commissioners that need to, would like to make a report based on any of your liaison activities?
I do want to say that the Health Alliance, the community, the Community Needs Assessment has been completed. And that is going to be, over the coming months, is going to be trying to get disseminated out into the public. I know that they typically have come to us, I don't know if they have set up a time to come in to present. But I think it'd be important for us to get that, to understand more about what the Community Needs Assessment is for Cabarrus County. And they do it every four years, so it's 2006 now, and then 2010. I think that's what the, the, excuse me, it was 2008 and 2012. So we've gotten that done, but it's based on the other information. And also, David Troutman was talking, presented that the state, in their infinite wisdom, went from just a few pages in inspections, restaurant inspections, to a book. So that they are now going to have, they're going to have new regulations to implement, and they're going to, it's going to create quite a bit of time to get it started. And they're hoping that it will make things a little bit easier. And they are going to, they said that, he was very complimentary of the restaurants here in Cabarrus County, and the food processing agencies here in Cabarrus County, of being very proactive and working with the Health Alliance, trying to get these new regulations. It's going to be a learning process for both the Health Alliance inspectors, as well as the food preparers. So that's going to be coming. And the reason why that is, if I remember correctly, the scale of 100, that scale may be modified. So.
One thing I would just like to tag on to that is having a restaurant in Stanley County. Stanley County had a information session for restaurant owners and food preparers to attend and, you know, really get a good grasp and understanding of what, what all this is going to entail. It was very informative.
They were planning to do that as well.
I was curious.
I just don't know when or anything, but they, he was talking about doing that, and it was basically, here's the new regs and.
Right. There it is.
Okay, also want to mention that next Monday, many of us will be joining Rowan Cabarrus Community College. They will be dedicating the seventh floor, where they are doing training for potential sheriff deputies through their course, courses that they offer at Rowan. Rowan Cabarrus Community College, they're going to do, I guess, a dedication. Also, I want to make sure I mentioned, there is the Literacy Council we talked about earlier, they have their big spelling bee. And that is on September the 6th, at 5:30 at the Old Courthouse Theater. Tickets are available. They need teams to spell. I believe you did that last year, didn't you?
I did it last year, I'm going to do it this year.
Okay, so we're going to see if Commissioner White, how well he can spell. You were, were you runner-up or something?
No, no.
No?
Rich is group one.
Rich is group one, okay. Mr. Cook's group one.
They had somebody spelling in the back.
Okay, County Manager Downs is in a group.
He's in the Rotary Club group.
So it should be a good evening, it's a, it's a good fundraiser for literacy, which, based on a couple items we, we covered tonight, is very important. Also, something that I think everybody in Cabarrus County and surrounding counties looks forward to, as a reminder, the fair will have its ribbon cutting on Saturday, September the 8th. And are we collecting canned goods on the 8th or the 9th? Sunday. On Sunday, the 9th, if you bring, Sunday is the 9th. Four cans, for adults, two per children, we will be collecting it, and you will get free admittance to the fair. Is there a certain time during the day, do you remember?
It's typically 1:00 to 4:00.
1:00 to 4:00. So please come out to the fair, it's always a great week, there's lots of things going on. And join us for the ribbon cutting, that's where we all have to jump out. As soon as we cut the ribbon, we have to get out of the way, because everybody's ready to get into the fair. And please support the canned food drive on Sunday, which is an effort that county employees head up. Any other comments from, as far as your liaisons? At this time, any general comments from board members?
I just had a couple I wanted to bring forth, and I appreciate, too, that Mr. Osterreich earlier was talking to the county, Deputy County Manager Dubois, and about the budget and the finances. And I think it's, it's great to be digging into that, and I wish that everybody would get that interested in the budget. Not everybody's going to. I wanted to clear up, and I want to make sure we understand, because when I hear that, we have a process. And of course, being on this board for 12 years, I've been there and seen what happens. We went at one time down, tried to go down to the 8% fund balance, because we can't draw the checkbook down to zero. Even somebody I admire greatly is Dave Ramsey, and he even says, before you start paying your debts off, you accrue a $1,000 emergency fund to begin with. And after you pay your initial round of debts off, you need to accrue three to six months of emergency fund. Our fund balance, that money, just so the public understands that there's not 75 million or 30 million just sitting there doing nothing. We are self-insured. So when we have workers' comp claims, or we have liability claims, we have to pay those out of pocket up to, I think, $300,000. So we better have money set aside to pay that. We are required by the state to maintain a certain amount of operating funds, and by our rating agencies to maintain a certain level of operating funds. We can't, it's not possible to take the county's financial, or bank accounts down to zero. That just will not work, and cannot, cannot work. We would be bouncing checks all over half the state, half the state if we did that. And I agree with you, I wish, I would love it for us to be able to predict when we make the tax rate of how much money's going to be surplus at the end of the year, after we voted on the budget. If we could do that kind of crystal ball predictions, then we don't need to be sitting up here, we need to be somewhere else making a lot more money than what we're making being commissioners. And I believe that coming up over the next several months, there will be a full audit done of the county finances of last year's budget, to, to look at where all the funds went, where the funds are sitting at. And then it comes time in December, I won't be here anymore, but y'all get the joy in December then of listening to that finance report, and then deciding at that point in time, when there is surplus money, what do you want to do with it? But I would just caution, after seeing what happened before on this board, is that when you take that money, one time, it's one-time money, and you put that into recurring expenses, and you try and use it to make up a, you use it to lower the tax rate, then not only do you get lower revenue the next year, you also get, you don't have that money anymore, and you still have the expenditures. And so it creates a hole that you, is very hard to dig yourself out of without having a massive tax increase to cover where you're at. And that is not, so I would, I would urge you to think of that, so. But yeah, I agree, if we, I wish there was a way that we could, every year, when we get the excess, we find out how much excess money we have in December that we could like to do in mid-year, you know, some of that mid-year, but we can't do that. And what we've done in the past is put that money, though, towards capital spending and towards retiring debt. And those are the two things you can spend it on, and it doesn't affect you going forward, as far as your recurring expenses are concerned. So anyway, just wanted to show that.
Okay, any other general comments? If not, at this time, I would accept a motion to go into closed session, as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A4. And we would invite Ryan McDaniel to join us from the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation to go into closed session.
So moved.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will recess this meeting to Monday at 4 o'clock, where we will be discussing the Mount Pleasant Prison Facility.